Did you get all the handouts?
We just got comments from the boutique company SDG and Huddle.
Yeah, sure have taken pictures of the other side.
Two columns, three and three. You can get one or you can still have everything there.
At clock.
Probably the rest are pictures by, but you had those.
Watch.
I know, this is six o'clock too.
Should have taken the pictures of landscaping by Basil Ginger.
They did, I had some and I didn't put them in there.
There's nothing left in there.
Oh my gosh, seriously.
Like to call the Special Planning Commission meeting of June 22 to order at 6:00 PM. Will the clerk please take roll?
Commissioner Seals.
Here.
Commissioner Sage L.
Here.
Commissioner Rubio.
Here.
Commissioner Bushnell.
Here. Commissioner Seals, can you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Seals. Is there anybody else that is currently online?
Michael Schwartz.
Okay. All right. Approval agenda, does the commission have any adjustments to tonight's meeting agenda? If the commission would like to discuss anything under the consent agenda such as minutes they need to be pulled out and put under new business at this point in time. All right, hearing no changes to the agenda, the agenda will stand as presented. Well, do we have reports this evening? I guess we can start with the city attorney.
Good evening, nothing to report today.
Okay. City planner?
I don't have anything to report, thank you.
Is there any, is the deputy administrator, they're not online or any?
Yeah, they're not.
They're fishing?
I'm not sure.
Okay. All right, I guess we will start our public participation portion of the meeting. Anyone wishing to step forward and discuss anything not on tonight's agenda can do so Since no one is present, no one's online, the next item on the business will be the consent agenda. Need a motion to approve the consent agenda?
All right, I make a motion, Commissioner Seals.
Commissioner Sage L., second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. There's no objections. Hearing none, the consent agenda is approved as presented.
Yeah, it did.
Okay. Our new business is committee of the whole, discussion revisions, landscape regulations for industrial zone lots and other minor amendments. I need a motion to enter into the committee of the whole to discuss.
Commissioner Sage L., make a motion, we entered the, into the committee of the whole to discuss.
Commissioner Seals, second.
All right. No objections, we've entered committee of the whole at 6:03 PM. Mrs. Crawford, do you have any comments regarding these items?
I don't have a lot of, well, I have some things that we can go through, but I'll just kind of bring us up to speed where we are. So in your package, you had the, again, the clean version, the first thing in the package is the clean version of the code as it exists today. Then you had some, make sure I'm going in order. There was some information that staff had provided. We had comments from Corvus Design, and then at the last, at the back of the package was the, the strike through an underlying version that was the last one that we looked at. What you have in view as handouts tonight, we did as, at the media, at the last meeting, we discussed about sending these out to, for comments to the landscape architects and landscape contractors that were licensed to do work in Wasilla. So we sent an email out to them, and we've received three sets of codes. Unfortunately, most of them occurred either today or yet, or, you know, a couple days ago, so there's not a lot of time for staff to vet it. I was at a conference last week, so I did not, you know, vet all of these. So you have, the, one of the handouts is the landscape code, the full entire set again, and there's some orange highlighted areas. There's only two sections in there, that's from SDG Landscaping. The next one is, you have a table with comments and then staff responses from the boutique company, and then you have a memo that we just received from Huddle with a couple comments. They had three comments on there.
So the, just to clarify, so the, the double white document with the breakout of the comments.
Yes.
Is this document layered into it, is it not?
Yes, they, they were, yes, you're correct. They worked together because the one that's turned landscape instead of portrait has the line numbering on it that the previous one did not have, so that way you can track where their comments. Some of them, most of them actually turned out when I printed it, but some of them were even longer, so they didn't all make it through. So I went ahead and put it in a table so you could read through that. Again, those are quick staff responses, those are not necessarily firm staff responses, but that was just a quick look because I just got this after lunch today. And then again, we have Huddle. Now, and the last thing that you have are just some photo examples. The code compliance officer luckily had a little bit of time today, so since some of the comments were about gravel versus mulch in the landscape beds, I just asked him, I hadn't even looked at them myself this year, just asked him to take some photos so I can, you know, I think they're pretty self-explanatory where they are, but if they're not, I can walk you through where they came from. So I just thought they might be helpful tools. Hopefully Commissioner Rubio received them. She picked up a, she had a hard copy picked up, but our printer was acting up and so she, I emailed the photos to you, Commissioner Rubio, did you receive those?
I did, I've got them pulled up on my phone.
Okay, I apologize, I know they're really small. We can, we can get them out, hard copies or something later, but again, they're just a tool. So what I can do is briefly walk through the comments that we've received to date. I've had, I had an inquiry today about, someone indicated they were going to come and speak tonight and provide some comments. I don't know if they actually will or not, some of the comments that they had, their proposals, I'd let them know we already adopted those and the one that was adopted a couple years ago, so they were happy about that, so I'm not sure if they're going to make it tonight. I know that the deputy administrator said someone approached, a developer approached her, and she provided him with a copy of them and said, provide any comments and forward. So I, I'm thinking where we are right now is, to give them time for the word to get out, we'll probably do one more committee of the whole and then try and wrap up that final draft in July and then put it for public hearing at the latest August. That, that's kind of the timing where we are. But I can go through, like I said, the ones that we have, I think they're pretty self-explanatory. A few of the comments, I'll have to do some additional research and then I can get back to you at the next meeting. That's simple to the commission.
You know, it's, I'm still trying to figure out what in, I mean, the consensus in the community, in the construction community, is that our landscaping agenda, shall I say, of what we want for landscaping is broken. And that's what I keep hearing. It's broken, it doesn't work. But when I ask, what is broken, I don't get any specific answers. I, I get more frustration. I get more of the frustration of, you know, I don't want to be told what I need to do. And, and I understand, we're in the city, so we're going to have, we're going to have some pushback on that. One thing that I did hear from one person was some, they, they were, had some frustration with some inconsistencies and things like that, of, of how the code flowed and referenced different things to make sure that, as far as our definitions are, make sure that they are either simple, so that they can be interpretive, or defined, so they can't be. And depending on, I mean, that's what I would like to see. Some things should be defined, this is exactly what it should be. Other things, I think, should be left for variations, because we don't want, I mean, one thing I don't want to see is, I don't want to see every landscaping bed in town looking the same. That, that, I don't think that is, I mean, we're not Florida, we're not Rancho Bernardo, California, we're not a pre-planned city, we're Wasilla, Alaska. And Alaskans like to do what Alaskans do, but we need to keep them between, as Jimmy Buffett said, we've got to keep them between the buoys. So I, I, that's what I would think, and we really need to look at, is, are we, are we catching all of the inconsistent, are there any inconsistencies that we've missed? Review, have the commission members really look at those definitions, are we comfortable with what's there? And can we move there? And then, how does it flow out into the code? I understand the sizes and things like that, and I think that, right now, I know all the landscapers are complaining about different things. I was looking at one of the landscape companies outside of town, and half their trees are dead that they shipped in. So there, everybody's having an issue with planting materials, that is a moment in time. That, that'll correct itself probably over time, so I know that's part of the frustration. So we, I believe we need to have some things in our code, and I'm sure we do, that allow for substitutions and things like that, making sure that we don't define something down too tight, so that it could change. That would be what, what I would like to see. And as I read it.
And the code doesn't actually prescribe the type of tree, unless it's a buffering thing.
It does, it does, and it doesn't, because there's only so many types of trees that actually grow here. So, I mean, in a sense, I mean, you're, you're limiting, if you say, I want this type of tree, you're really limiting what we, what survives in Alaska or what is available. There's only, only a few, I don't, you're not, not like in the States where you have so many choices, things to choose from, I mean, you're really, it's, things are limited. But there was one thing that I saw, it was in the comments. It was, and, and the response that you had, you put back out there, it was, there's two things that I wanted.
Was this under the boutique company?
It was, and, and it had to do with the mulch, the mulch definition. So you had made a comment in there that said that, yes, there is a definition, and when it was Wasilla, Mississauga, Wasilla, WNC, 1640, no, 04 something.
Dot 070.
Yeah. I had it memorized earlier. And so it was defined, but then I went back and it was like, I could see where he was kicking in on the dead plant material type stuff and, and some type of define, so I think little, little things like that will go a long ways. I'm on the, the side of rock versus mulch. I think mulch looks great at first. Rock looks great at first, but rock and gravel aggregate holds its integrity longer over time with, with cleaning, whereas mulch you have to replace and redo. So it's, I've seen, I've seen good, I've seen good landscaping beds with both. And I just finished, of course, one of my own, and it'll look good for, I know for a year, and then I'm going to, another two years I'll have to completely redo it. So I was watching the owners of, whoever's doing the landscaping over in front of Fred Myers, and this spring they were, they had a big vacuum truck, and they were vacuuming out their gravel beds and getting the stuff out of them. So they were maintaining them the way they were supposed to. So I, and I, I look at, at some of the gravel landscaping I have around some of the buildings that I manage, and some of them are in really good shape, and others are not. And of course, right now, I'm experiencing a tremendous amount of concrete work, because of all these curbs and gutters and everything that, that are all failing, because concrete just never lasts for very long in Alaska. So I, I think about those things when, when we're, when we're adding them, and, and where's the pros and cons and, and pluses, so. That's what I, I got from some of this, I, I'm opposed to too many islands in parking lots, because I was the kid that grew up and I learned how to drive in a parking lot, and that's where we did our three, control 360s, but I understand we want to keep people from doing that nowadays. So even Wasilla High School put them in to stop people from doing that.
I don't think the landscape islands are actually to stop you from doing donuts in the parking lot.
What are they for?
They're multipurpose, she's probably up here, but she's, she's watching me, she's listening, she's grading me. She's with Corvus Design, so, but, no, they're, they're multipurpose. So I'll try and go through this because I wasn't prepared for the question. So a sea of asphalt is just a heat sink. Okay, you, we say that we don't have hot in Alaska, that we don't deal with, that we only have a couple months, all of that. But during those couple months, I'll tell you, just drive a vehicle without air conditioning, go get you some lunch somewhere in Wasilla, right in this core area, and then go find you a spot to sit where you can actually breathe in your car and eat your lunch. There isn't anywhere. There aren't any trees, because of the angle of the sun and the type of the trees and the lack of the trees that we have, there's nothing shady in a parking lot. So it's aesthetically pleasing to have trees, to break up that asphalt is an aesthetic thing, it's also a sociological or a physiological thing, that putting those trees in there makes you feel better as a human, you have that connection to nature. It's multipurpose. Again, like I said, you have, it also gives an ability, it functions to capture stormwater and rain and things like that, so that you're not pushing that out into the ditches or, you know, whatever, overdoing the system. So there's multipurposes, those are the ones I can come up with off the top of my head. But, and again, just because we don't have heat year-round doesn't mean we don't. And then you can get into whether you believe the climate change and all of that, you know, the heat and the, all of those, it just breaks these up. I, I'm going to say probably most people, for you to ask them, they just think they're more attractive looking, they break them up. I notice around here, that like I said, there are a couple trees, but you go for them and there's already a car underneath them. Some employee in a parking lot found that at such and such a clock or by this time in the afternoon, the shade's going to be over this spot and they're parked out there.
Okay.
Like I said, it's multipurpose. Depending on which part of the country you're in, one usually carries more weight than the other, but.
But up here.
Yeah, it's just to break them up and to make, so you don't have that large sea of asphalt. So most of your planning, most of your, okay, so we're seeing a big change, I don't want to get too deep into it, but a big change, you know, with Amazon and delivery online.
It's okay to get, it's okay to get deep into it, because that's what we're here for.
Yeah.
We have to get, I mean, one of all, we have to understand.
Right.
I mean, you have the knowledge, you have the training, you, I mean, I, I had family that grew up in Rancho Bernardo, I understand planned communities down to a T, that you're going to have a gas station before they even built the city, they knew a gas station would be there. And it's a beautiful city, it, it's great. Everything was planned out, Wasilla was not.
No.
So now we're trying to change things and we have to understand what, the why.
Yeah.
We don't, I don't necessarily understand, need to understand the why so much. A little bit of the what, but a lot of the why. Because when everybody starts, I mean, everybody complains about things in a, and even I do, in a general way. Give me a specific, give me something to argue, is it right, is it wrong, and let's move on to the next point. That's because we can have three, four months of these discussions, but what, what are we actually fixing? And, and that's, we need to be able to go out to the public and say, this is why. And we as commissioners are going to get drilled on it as well, and we have to be able to tell them, this is why, this is why that's there. And then somebody looks at us goes, oh, so my opinion, which is like many, is not based in true knowledge, and so therefore is unjustified. And if we can give a logical reason of why we're doing something, yeah, people might not like it, but now they can't argue against it.
If I can put it in a real estate scenario for you, that'll make more sense to you.
That always helps.
It, it's not going to apply to everybody, because there's an exception to every rule, and I'm oftentimes the exception, so I understand that. But when you have a house, say you're in a $500,000 market price range for a home, and it has no landscaping, and it just has a grass lawn. And then you have another one that's over here, that's got the same quality of house, same $500,000 house, but this one has trees, it has landscape, and it has flower beds, whether they're low-maintenance flower beds or high-maintenance flower beds, it's that street appeal. The value of this, this one's going to sell faster and get a higher price than the one that's sitting next to it that's very similar oftentimes.
So they're not both $500,000 houses.
No, they're both 500,000?
No, no.
Well, okay.
Let's go to something different. Let's say we got two 2,000 square foot homes.
Okay, 2,000, okay.
Both are four bedrooms, and both, and both are white.
Well, they're comparable in their size and amenities.
Everything's the same, except for the landscaping.
Except for the landscaping. You know, you hear about all the time that, that curb appeal is very important. Well, the same thing's important when you're trying to draw businesses to come and invest money into your community. There, they, there's just this intrinsic thing in humans that we want things that are attractive, that appeal to us, that, and the trees and the vegetation is a known factor of that. And so when you have a strip, I mean, you can look in the lower 48 and all the studies and look at the tens of millions of dollars they're doing to retrofit those old highways that, because we're still dealing with that, that, that development that occurred after the war to be auto-oriented. And I get that we're still auto-oriented, but auto-oriented doesn't have to strip away everything else from the environment and all the quality from that environment. And so that streetscape perimeter landscaping is that buffer between you and that sea of parking that's necessary to serve this auto-oriented community. Now, I'll tell you that most communities now, and the new communities being built, I just came from Indianapolis and Carmel, Indiana, and both of those are going more toward putting back nature into the urban center, especially Indianapolis. I mean, they're, they're really big on landscaping and trees to soften that hardscape that they have, you know, those large buildings. But Carmel, Indiana is a planned community, but they went in with the intention to put the infrastructure in, to have it attractive, so that it's attractive for pedestrian, it has all the amenities for automobiles and for trucking and for service. It serves all the users instead of just the vehicle. What we're dealing with and have had is just design that's for autos. It's for the convenience of the auto, it's for the convenience of clearing the road for the auto, and they've forgotten the quality of life and that, that importance to the human soul and to how they feel. So that's what a lot of times why your comprehensive plan, our comprehensive plan even says that they wanted it more attractive, they wanted more landscaping, which is why we do that. We have the purposes, purposes at the beginning of ours that go into that too. So we can, you know, I'm trying to not try and bring big city stuff back to us, but we also don't want to be 20 years down the road and having to retrofit everything like Anchorage is trying to fit everything back in. We can do it right the first time, hopefully, learn from everybody else's lessons, or we can just go down that path and then try and fix it later. So it's a balance, you're right, because there's a cost incurred to it. But again, with the economic studies, the, all of the conferences, and if you lack resources, I can dig them up for you, because I, I don't have a problem doing that, I just typically don't figure most people are that interested. But again, when you're trying to win communities, and we may never pull in a big corporate headquarters here, or not in our lifetimes, but even pulling in smaller businesses, they often, people talk about zoning's negative, it's negative, oh, it's, you restrict what I can do. But a company like MAC Federal Credit Union that just came in and built a nice building and chose a location, likes to be in a community that has zoning and code compliance, because they know that what's built next to them when it's redeveloped, right now it might not be the greatest, but when it's done, it's going to have to do equal to them or better. So it protects their investment in their real estate. So it's, it is a choice, it's a political decision, a political choice, and it's my understanding, based on our comprehensive plan that was adopted, at least at that time, the vision was, what we've had is not good enough. We want our community to be nicer looking, to be attractive, to bring businesses here to make people want to make this their home. So yeah, how do you balance that, and when do you say it's too much? I get the same thing about, well, I just don't like the code. Well, really what it comes down to when I talk to them is, I don't want to do any landscaping. So what's that balance? And then what are your waivers and what are your parameters? You know, if, do you have different standards for your core arterial highways versus, you know, interior roads? I don't know, you can look at that kind of stuff. So everything we've done has been trying to enhance that, the visual aspect of our community from that roadway. Because we're not going to get rid of the asphalt, although Amazon and those things are, you're going to see your big boxes and those kind of things reduce and change, and they're already developing differently. Designs are going to change just to deal with these market conditions. You're going to see people wanting more outdoor space and more, you know, that green space, but we didn't see it too much in this community, but throughout the US, there was a lot of them that really flipped toward pedestrian-oriented areas and turning their back on, we're tired of the automobile being dominant and everything being done to just make it easy for the road system. And I think that's where Wasilla hit in 2011 or 2012.
Well, yeah, and I would love to have a, I mean, yes, going through the exercise with the, the brownfield spaces over here and realizing how many people actually do actually walk in, in Wasilla, out of need and necessity, not because of, because they can't. That, I mean, it's, we're not a walkable community because we, we want to, it, it's, there's people walking around the community because they have to. And we're slowly providing, Alaska's slowly starting to provide some type of mass transit around the valley to move people around, so that that's not quite as, I mean, because, I mean, we are not a walkable, a walkable friendly community, more so from weather standpoint, I will say, than, than the topography and, and even topography, I mean, it's, there's a lot of rolling hills and things like that, that just aren't that friendly. So that, you know, going to a bicycle community like Portland, Oregon, it sounds great, but it's not us. There, there's that walkable side because of, of the underserved and elderly that are in the community wanting to live in the core, and I, I do get that. So we have to, do you have to offset that, and that'll be, that's other parts of our code. One of the comments that I saw in here, and was talking about the islands, things, they asked a question, and I didn't see a response back, about what was the intent of the, the trees, the road screened, I think it was the road screening trees, is that the one I'm, I'm thinking of? It was on the, it was the, it was page one, two.
Or a couple. I know there was.
Fourth, it was, it was the bottom of the fourth page, or page five, actually, five of 24. And it said, need to discuss the intent of trees and what a six-inch tall evergreen actually looks like. I think that was your response. Retri, because we were at eight-foot trees versus six-foot trees.
You said the bottom of page four?
Five, five of 24, of the, of the comments.
Oh, okay.
The landscape one.
Double wide page.
Okay.
Because it has your comment back.
Oh, well, this one does too.
It does now.
The table has both.
Okay.
So, that's what I was looking at, so.
It was easier for me to tailor these, because at one point in time.
So what line are you on?
The very last one, the.
Last page? Okay, sorry, I'm lost.
Okay, so on this, on the double side page, page five of 24.
So five of 24.
So we're, they were talking in here about reducing the height of the trees and some of the plants.
Oh, right.
But the evergreens from eight feet to six feet.
Right.
And there'd been some comments in, I think it may have been, been in the huddle, I'm not sure if they were in, in, in the other response, I, what I keyed in on that response was about those beautiful cottonwood trees that we have out there. They are. response was about, um, those beautiful cottonwood trees that we have out there. They are majestic, they are majestic, I'll, I'll say that much for them. They look beautiful along the river, not so beautiful in the river.
Or in my yard.
Yeah. Um, but here it says, um, so the comment was, reduce the height to six feet evergreen trees, and this is in regards to line 56, minimum plant size. And they got into bringing the evergreens down to six feet, and I, and I was thinking about it, because, and the relevance of the discussion is the ongoing issue I have on a landscaping, landscaping plan, and a conversation I had at a minors game with Joel from Valley Tree Service. And Joel used to be the tree guy for MEA, I believe, for many years, so he's pretty good with his trees. Um, he's my tree cutter of choice, if I can get him, and he didn't cut one of my trees, and now I'm getting rid of a travel trailer because I didn't have a good tree. But, um, he was talking about how at Target, the landscaper's like, yeah, I'm putting these trees in, and he came by and says, you put those trees in, I'm going to cut them down tomorrow, because they were all underneath the power lines. And the landscape architect person doing it said, I don't care, my job's done tomorrow, and he put them in, and the next day they cut them all down. A little bit of revisionist history. So they met the code and then got rid of it because it didn't work. So I have a situation now where he wants me to plant a tree, and I'm sitting here looking at the trees we're about to take down, which are, I'm, I got City Wasilla, talked to Archie, and they infringe into the right of way and hang over the road, so they're going to take them down, but they also hung into the trees, but MEA won't touch them. So I've got somebody at least cutting them off at the ground, now I've got, I've got to dig it all up and get rid of the root bases, and so we can plant two more trees, according to my landscape plan from the architect. And there's like eight power lines right there that run across the highway. I mean, it's not a good place to put a tree, anywhere near that area, because it's going, the prevailing winds are going to blow the tree at the power lines. And so I'm looking at this, and I'm like, I didn't think anything of it when I looked at the plan, it was the conversation I had about trees and this other site that I started looking at, I'm like, oh, okay, now what do I do? So thus, trying to revise the plan now to something that will function properly in that, in that specific area. So I.
You know, one thing we, I've run into is, it's hard for sites that are being retrofitted.
Super hard.
Um, because they don't always have an as-built survey, or they don't always have a site plan, because back in the day, in the 80s, you could hand draw a little sketch with wiggly lines and say, this line is 100 feet, and this little line is 600 feet. I mean, it wasn't to scale, it wasn't anything. So today's code, your site plan has to show where all your easements are, your utility easements, whether they're overhead, underground, that kind of stuff. So typically, in a new development, the landscape architect will have that drawing, will superimpose their landscaping on top of it, they know where the utility lines are, because the code clearly prohibits trees under the utility lines and has some separation. When you're next to, within the easement or next to an easement, you have to still have some limitations to keep shorter trees and things, so that you don't run afoul of MEA and getting your trees cut down. But sometimes what happens is, you know, like with older ones for sure, but even sometimes with new ones, is whoever did the site plan didn't show the utility easements. And then it just runs. I don't know their utility easements, I don't go researching, doing title searches and all of that, see where utility easements are. So you're relying on the plans.
Title search isn't going to give you where they're at.
But I don't go do research, I don't do, you know, I don't research DNR to see where any kind of easements are, or.
That's, that's more of my poke at the, at the process, more so than anything else.
No, no, I, I understand, but I mean.
In a, in a new plan, yes, in a new plan, you're going to know exactly where everything's at.
You're supposed to.
Um, so the, the question, let's, I'll get back, because I'm digressing in the other stuff. Um, the need, uh, need to discuss required tree locations mainly along the streets and with the parking, um, and then the comment was, what was the intent, the intent of the trees along the street, and, and I voiced this before, because I've, I've been involved, but I, I don't like trees near entrances along the street, because they screen visibility.
Well, you can't have that either, the code doesn't allow that.
But, but the trees along the, along the street eventually get big enough, even when they're down the street, that they, they, they can, in, in some areas, depending on what are, are planted, depends on what are planted. So, and most of the streets around here are a little bit better than Anchorage and Eagle River, so I'll phrase that. That's where the issue that I ran into with those, those tight trees. So I, I, when I look at a site here, I don't want to see a tree anywhere near a driveway, for that reason.
Yeah, and typically, I'm not going to say I've never missed a tree in a driveway, but I'm looking for site triangles when it comes to fences or trees or shrubs. The shrubs have to be kept three feet or less, the trees, if you have one even close by, has to be limbed up. We have that site triangle regulation. I think what, a lot of the community just isn't aware of what the code does and doesn't, look at, and what it does and doesn't protect.
Right.
And then how that gets carried through to those plans.
So to the six foot height versus the, and we, we talked about bringing the plants down, uh, one of the comments that I caught in here, and I think Huddle may have talked about it as well, is going, the smaller trees actually fare better up here, because they, they're, they acclimatize, they can, they grow, um, so they're not quite as expend, they're not as expensive, because they are smaller, but they're better quality trees for us, and then they, then they grow better over time, whereas the bigger tree may or may not.
I could, I could show you a six of one and a half dozen of the others. So I'm not a landscape architect, and I never purport to be one.
So I was, I was curious on the thoughts of this, but I mean, what do, what do other, you've been to planning commission, conferences, I mean, this must come up at, at times.
You'd be surprised how little landscaping actually comes up.
Oh.
And from a planning standpoint, it's pretty much an accepted, okay, every community has their level of tolerance, meaning, we want to be super fancy, or we want to do the bare minimum, or we want to be somewhere in between, or depend on where we, you know, I mean, it, it's based on what that community vision is and what their goals are. But really, landscaping is never a topic at a planning conference.
Okay.
Because that's a political decision, your comprehensive plan, and then your codes establish, what do you want your community to look like? You know, we all know that when you first buy the house in a neighborhood with a little tiny tree out front, it doesn't look like much. In five years, it looks better, in 10 years, it looks really nice. And when you go to buy the house after the subdivision's been there for 10 years, you go, wow, this is a really nice subdivision, I liked all those trees, these are nice, this is, you know, all this kind, but if you were the one to buy when it was first built, you'd be like, oh, this just looks like you just cleared a farm field and dropped some little tiny saplings in the ground, and ew, I mean, it's just not as appealing to you. So that's the political decision, is how long do you want to wait before you achieve the vision, the goal of making that streetscape more attractive? And it truly is just a political decision, it's just a choice. Are you willing to wait five years, 10 years, 15 years? Because although vegetables grow fast, and some other things grow fast in Alaska, some of the trees, and we've got somebody out in my audience, but they can come in at the end and correct anything I say wrong, but some trees grow fast in Alaska, and some take forever to get even a few inches on them.
It depends on the.
So it depends on the tree.
It depends on the summer.
And we do have limited tree choices, and so McDonald's, I did not tell them to pick those size evergreens that they put in their parking lot. I don't know, those jokers must be 10, 12 feet, I don't know, did you look up, you were part of that one, but anyway, I'm not going.
Commissioner Rubio, can I talk?
Yeah.
Uh, so I have, like, I kind of have like an idea, I've been thinking about, well, what if we conducted like a public outreach and reached out for engineers, landscaping architects, home builders, developers, I mean, I don't know, landscaping installers, and use it as a public outreach, and get a committee together of like, I don't know, I mean, just kicking it out there, like maybe four to six, you know, and they work with the city staff to develop something, because I feel like, we're just doing circles every time we get in the school, and none of us are experts on the commission, I'm just speaking, that we're not engineers, you know, we're not landscaping architects. I feel like we need to reach out to the public, since they're having issues with it, and, and get more opinions, and actually get a committee together to, to volunteer and put something together and revise it with the city. Top on that?
Actually, actually, it's a, it's, I was, one of the things I was going to ask is, we always do these as committee of the whole, where we discuss and things come to us, but we don't, we can't, it's, actually, I take that back. We did have one committee of the whole where I opened it up, and we did let the public, we actually had basically an open meeting. But that's, that was, I don't think that had happened, I've, I've never seen it happen before, and I haven't seen it happen since. That was one, that was on the, uh, VBROs.
We did it with a downtown overlay and we.
Did you do it with the downtown?
Yeah, so, so it was done in the past when it was bigger things, we've had some, and yes, it has just been up to the chair and the commission that was seated at the time as to whether they wanted to allow people to participate during committee of the whole or not. Um, and some have, and some, sometimes we still, even when they're invited, they don't attend, so there's no reason to even open it up, but, um.
Well, I think, I honestly don't even think it should involve other commissioners. I feel like they should have to work as a, a public outreach with the city and come together. I mean, the maps are bitty, but it.
Like a.
And I, I don't, I don't see why we're not using resources, even in our own community.
So what I, what I will say is, I don't disagree with that particular comment. And if we were intending to rewrite this as a whole, or totally start over, um, that's, that's definitely a preferred way to go, is at least to have some kind of public involvement, whether it's a subcommittee, or whether you have a work session, and you have them come out, you know, for a couple nights, and, you know, you work at tables and, you know, draft things up in person, that kind of stuff. I, I don't think it, um, takes the three-year time period that the subdivision construction manual took, but, um, definitely you can get more involvement. But the thing that I'll caution the planning commission on, and I'm not saying that you still don't involve those experts, you do, you need their input, and we did send out, Commissioner Rubio, I'm not sure if you caught that, that we did email this out, I mean, it wasn't like six months ago that we emailed it out, but we did recently email it out to the landscape architects and the landscape contractors that are licensed to do work. So home builders don't do landscaping, because there's no landscaping requirement for single family or duplex. So they don't have a dog in the hunt, they don't care, I mean, it doesn't impact.
Well, what about your, what about your engineers and your landscaping insurers? I mean, these are, these are people that work in our public, just like you said with the, you know, Commissioner Bushnell that talked about, you know, coming in and then cutting down or you did, about after they planted the trees. I mean, these are people that actually work in the public, and I feel like they should be, you know, they should be outreaching the source. This is not something that the commission should decide on, or really, I'm showing the days out. I mean, we've been talking around for a couple months, and I feel like we're getting up to a new one.
So, yeah, and I'm not going to, I don't disagree with you. So the whole intent of this particular opening up of the landscape regulations had nothing to do with rewriting all these provisions. It was to look at industrially zoned properties and decide whether the code should be less stringent on them or not. And so while we had it open, we were going to look at some clarifying things, and, you know, once you open up, is there anything that's causing these roadblocks or these major issues? And so that's why we have the input. So a landscape plan has to be drawn up by a landscape architect, unless you're a super small lot, or a super small building, or both. Um.
Right, I'll get that.
But the, the thing that, as a commission, that, again, that I would caution you is, it's all well and good to invite all those to the table, and they should be at the table, but don't forget your residents, which is what the purpose of your planning documents and your planning regulations are intended to protect the quality and welfare and safety of the residents. So the fact that it costs a develop, if the residents have said their vision is, they want these improved landscaping and things like that, and the council adopts it, and the comp plan has to go to the borough, Planning Commission and the Borough Assembly, and it gets adopted, that's your established vision, and then you adopt regulations to implement that. So the residents spoke out in 2008 through 2011 and said, we want to step it up, we want our community to look different, we want it to look better. So you can't discount what the residents want, just because a developer says it costs me more money, or I have to plan a year ahead of time to get the plants, or, you know, I can't do a last minute project. I mean, you certainly take that in and you factor that in, that should be considered, but it's not all about the developer and what works for them. It is your residents, your planning rules are in place to protect the quality of life for your residents. And so as a planner, you're going to always see me push toward that, I definitely want to round out the conversation, but that, that's what your, your mission is. And so it's a multifaceted mission, but nonetheless.
I did see one comment in there, and I, I did not necessarily agree with it, because I don't think we as a planning commission should be taking into account whether or not somebody has allergies or not, on whether or not we allow certain trees or not. Um.
Well, that was my comment.
I, I saw that, I saw that.
No, I mean, I'll only, and it's not me, I don't have allergies to it necessarily that impact me, but.
Yeah, but it's Alaska, and everything, whether it be a birch tree, um, I mean, birch trees are just notorious for how much, um, dust and sap and pollen that they put out, and people just don't realize it's coming from those birch trees, but it'll coat their decks black if they don't wash them, and, and their cars, and their trailers, and I got a tri, black trailer now. Um, but.
You know, that's just been a repeated thing, so what I've been told.
People cut the cottonwoods because of.
It's the cottonwoods, because they create litter, it's no different than a tree that produces berries and drops them all over the sidewalk and then makes a messy sidewalk. When you have a city and you're making sidewalks, you don't typically put those kind of trees next to them. If it's in a landscape island, doesn't matter if it's dropping berries into the landscape island, because it's not creating an issue. So there's that appropriate location, and most of the support for the cottonwoods, actually, the comments were more for riparian zones, which are along the shoreline, which is not what we're dealing with most of the time, because those are residential, almost all the time, what we have on our lakes are residential. Um, so, but they also, and this is just what I've been told by many different people, is they tend to rot from the inside out, and then they, they fall over.
That's what the birch trees do, too.
Yeah, so, I mean.
That's all trees, actually.
Yeah. And a lot of people don't like the litter that they put out like they're doing right now, the snowing that they do, and then they drop those big balls of their, you know, seeds and whatever the little.
I think the flowers, the, the seeds that we have on, I was thinking it was cottonwoods, but the cottonwoods aren't quite ripe yet, that's, uh, most of it is dandelion, I believe.
No, no, our cottonwoods are.
Your cottonwoods are going?
Right there in the parking lot, it's snowing all day.
Okay.
Been snowing.
Yeah, Bretton Wood.
So again, that's just a, that's just a decision, um, at the time that it was changed. And again, that section of the code is for giving you credit for preserving a tree. So again, is a cottonwood tree that important to the community, is it that attractive, is that? Okay, so I'm only going to the south, because it's just what I know, a live oak, these old live oaks that are big with the overreaching branches, you want to preserve those, so you give a lot of credit to the developer that will keep one of those on site, and not let him put in a bunch of little saplings that are maybe eight feet or six feet or 10 feet tall. If he'll preserve this one really nice tree that's valuable for many reasons, you'll give him some offset. That's the only place in our code that talks about cottonwoods, is giving you credit.
That's the, that's the three to one, I was looking at the three to one ratios.
They just don't qualify, but if you wanted to add them back in, it really doesn't matter. Um, again, I'm just sharing information that people have shared with me, but.
And didn't one of the changes, uh, one of the red line changes was actually striking the fact that they didn't count, wasn't it?
Somebody probably proposed that, that was probably in their change.
Oh.
Because again, they strike through over my strike through.
Oh, okay.
So you have to kind of look and see whose comment is out there to the side. So, um, again, just going back to the, you know, putting out the comment, we can send this out, it's certainly, just because it started this one way, doesn't mean that the commission can't choose to take it down a different path, if you want more input, more whatever, um, just give me the direction that you want, and then I'll.
So I'm going to, I'm going to say one more thing, and then you, Commissioner Rubio, you can take over, um, like, because I know you have some comments, Commissioner O'Segal, please, and.
Yeah, I have some comments.
Um, but the other one I had a question about is, um, line 332, page 11 of 24. And this is talking about parking lot interiors again.
Yes.
So in this particular case, we're taking our landscape, each landscape area up to 160 square feet versus 100 square feet, so we're making them bigger.
And that was a recommendation from a landscape architect, because 100 square feet, because that landscape island has to have trees, shrubs, and flowers in it.
Okay.
So to support a tree, what they said was, 100 square feet isn't really enough, unless you do that, is it engineered, structured soil, whatever, underneath, it's very expensive. But just if you put an asphalt parking lot, and you just leave a hole that's 100 square feet.
Because the trees spread out too much.
It's not healthy for the tree.
The tree spreads out.
Yes, it needs somewhere for its roots to go, and that's not enough. So that was a recommendation to actually increase that, to, to make the tree more viable.
Okay. I love trees, but they don't pay my bills. And, and, I mean, seriously, I mean, and so, I mean, that. And, and so, I mean, that's one of, that's one of the things, that's what the public is coming to us and saying, "It's expensive." I know that people want the vision. They want, they, but we, I, I, the justification for a healthier tree versus, um, you know, I, I'm just, I, it seems like that's going the wrong direction or I depend, I think it's going the wrong direction. Let me, that's my opinion. Um, if we're trying to cut down on, it's, I guess, depends what, whose side you're of this on. I'm looking at it from, I think our landscaping for a property is very, can be very expensive. And I see that in some of these cases, and that's why we're talking about going with better plants, but smaller plants because they're a little more, um, less expensive. Um, there are some clarifications in here about the caliper, the size of the tree, et cetera. Where do you measure it? Make sure that what we're, what we're telling them is, is consistent. So if you're looking at a tree versus something in a pot, you're not-
Yeah, that was a new change and I just looked at it wrong.
Eliminating, eliminating the confusion. But to start making each of the landscape beds on the interior parking lots bigger, uh, we're gonna lose, we lose parking spa, we're gonna lose parking spaces in, in these parking lots, which means that we're gonna lose on building size because we're gonna, we're adding 60 more. I mean, that's a 33, that's a 34% increase in the size.
Oh.
The park-
Oh, you mean-
It's a 34% increase in landscaping size, which is a 34% decrease in the amount of concrete I gotta- So maybe there's a trade-off there, but, um, I've got to maintain it over time as a, as a building owner, et cetera. Or it, so it's, I, I like the idea of going from 16 perennials, flowers, um, per 100 square feet of, of planting bed. But if we're going to a minimum of 160, now we've got all these extra, we've got more plants in there, but we've got the tree. The tree does better. This is where I get stuck because I'm not an expert in this field. I just see the size. I look at the cost. I object. I don't know if my objection is rational because I'm not a landscape expert.
Yeah, and I think it's as helpful to be an economic development specialist too, to understand the value that you get, the increase in your property value that you have from having landscaping versus not. It's a long-term, I mean, it's a return on your investment. You get that investment back because your property now is more attractive and draws a higher price, whether you're commercial or residential. It's same with building design. That's why in the downtown overlay, we prescribe that you have to have glass and windows and storefronts because that is consistent with the downtown. It is that pedestrian ability. And once it goes to that, you're gonna retain that value. Sure, it's gonna cost a little more to put more glass in initially, but when you sell that building in five or 10 years or whatever, or in even two years, it's gonna be that much more valuable because of that, um, the materials that you've put into it versus, you know, making a different choice. Um, so although we're not set, we're not property tax-
Sometimes, sometimes, not always, not always, sometimes.
Well, you could over upgrade your house or whatever and then you, you'll never see the return. But typically, um, there are so many studies about the value, the economic value for communities adding those.
I agree. It's, it's, it's where's the-
Yeah, no, you have to find the balance.
I, I agree. I mean, and that, that was why when you were giving the discussion about the two houses, I said, "Keep it to the square footage of the house, not the price of the house." Because if the houses are the same price, then that's not, that's not the right argument.
I didn't mean it that way. I meant they're comparable homes.
Because if you take a three-bedroom, 2,000-square-foot house versus a four-bedroom, 2,000-square-foot house, which one's more valuable? And it depends on who's looking at it. Because they're both the same size, they both should be the same value. Because they're literally the same, if they were the same thing. But it's, it's amenities and that go, that prescribes to the buyer. So landscaping can be the same thing, but this is, this was one of the ones I picked up on. It's like, okay, we're increasing. Why? Because if we're trying to make this easier for people, if we're taking, if we're adding more landscaping into a large parking lot, that's gonna become more expensive. That means that we have to have bigger sites to develop in order to, I'm, I'm dealing with a parking lot issue where I am perfectly legal within the code of my parking lot spots, yet the businesses that are there are screaming for more spaces and people are running into their cars. And there's, I, I, there's nothing I can do. I can't just drum up more parking or I, or, actually, I can. I can put more parking in, but I've got to get rid of the landscaping to do it. And it, it's a trade-off. So I need, I need the businesses, I need the people in the businesses to run the, to run the cash flow to make the business. So it's, now they're complaining and I, I'm caught. I don't know what, I'm, this is one I will have to look at long and hard and figure out what we're going to do. Because for the last year, most of the businesses haven't had very much traffic because some of their services were closed. And I have a couple vacancies in the area and they're telling me they don't have enough parking. That is a recipe for, for me in the next two years is gonna be a problem, so.
So it sounds like you're proposing another work thing is to look at the parking requirements in the code.
Well, what I'm saying is if you make these landscaping islands bigger, I'm losing parking spots. Because 60 square feet is at least a spot.
Yeah, and again, it was recommended by a landscape architect.
Okay.
And maybe we'll hear about why that came forward.
That's what I was asking, but you said it's because of the tree.
Of the others that reviewed it, nobody said, "Oh, no, that's not good. We don't need 160."
Okay.
Okay, so people added additional comments that weren't already addressed. They didn't, so I would say the implication is they agreed with all the other proposed changes and then they added the ones that they thought that hadn't been addressed.
Okay.
That's why it was confusing.
Yeah, and so I can try, I'll try and track it. Like I said, I got this late. All three of them rolled in within the last couple of days and so there just wasn't the time to get it in a more user-friendly format. So I'll definitely do that for you for next time. And then I can resend this out to the same people we sent it out to the last time. If you want me to expand the group to architects and engineers that aren't landscaped, I can do that too and let them know that there's, you know, this code change. We can certainly do that. Again, I wasn't prepared to get into the full-blown discussion about why we have landscaping and the values. I can do it. I just, this was my direction for the mayor was to deal with industrial and then make sure if there's anything that's unclear with the rest of it, if there's any adjustments that we need based on since it's been adopted, we'll do those minor changes. But that doesn't mean we can't change it. That just wasn't the direction.
Yeah, I just think if you're opening something up like this, unless we're only opening up those pages, then it's, you might as well, I mean-
We can always separate the issue. We can just deal with the industrial.
We can, we can, we-
And carry the rest over and-
We can carry, we can do a, we can do a portion at a time.
Right. Yeah, nothing says you have to do anything.
But we don't have to put it away.
I mean, as in move forward an amendment that deals with the industrial piece, get that to the city council and we continue to work on the rest of it and create a plan for how you want to do it.
Commission members, keep that under consideration. If that's something you want to do, please say so. But I'm gonna, I'm gonna reserve my comments for now and let, I, since I've been kind of controlling the, the conversation for the last 40 minutes, I'll let you guys take over.
Um, I see the parking islands in, I see the parking islands in, in a different light. I see them mainly as traffic control, which will show what quite a few of these pictures show is to actually control traffic in and around the parking areas. So, um, in a 100-square-foot bed, I don't think we need a tree, but we could have some bushes. Um, but mostly the islands are, on a snowplow basis, are a problem for efficient snow removal. And they end up being piled up with snow in a lot of places. So, um, I like them for traffic control in parking areas because if you didn't have that one at Fred Meyer's, people'd be cutting that corner. It would be a nightmare. So I see islands as traffic control more than adding landscaping. I mean, let's, let's make our traffic control look good, but, um, let's, it, because most businesses want to look attractive. Big developments want to look attractive. So they're gonna, they're gonna go with quite a few items in this code with no, little or no problem. But I see using these islands as more traffic control and allowing the businesses to have more parking spaces.
Well, if you look at the parking lot between Fred Meyer's and you look at Target, of those two developments, just taking them on their face, you did a visual survey of residents, of individuals. What do you think, which one do, would you think that they would say is more attractive? I know there's a lot more variables than landscape islands on it. But I'm just saying, as a whole, you look at, from the Parks Highway, you look at Fred Meyer's, they got outbuildings just like Target does, and they have fast food just like Target does. And then you look at Target and Target doesn't have the, they may not be, I'd have to go out and verify it. They may not have exactly what our code requires because they've been there a long time. Um, so they chose to do that, but they look totally different. Um, one looks like a sea of asphalt, like you can land an airplane on it. The other one's got some breaking up with some trees and some vegetation. And they, they're, I mean, they support the argument to the rock because they do have rock, but they also use grass and some other things. But there's that, that visual aspect of them, um, that I think-
I'll tell you, as a driver, uh, between the two parking lots, I'll take Freddie's parking lot any day. That Target parking lot is complicated. It's hard to maneuver in. And so on the flip side of the coin, I'm looking at it from a traffic point of view, not from an aesthetic point of view. I want it to look nice too, but back to what Eric said, there's got to be a balance, especially for the newer, smaller businesses coming in. Because most of the big businesses that are coming in, they, they have a corporate plan. It's all set up. They want to have little round balls here and little trees there and, uh, so I'm, I want, I want our new, smaller businesses, the ones that will eventually populate our walking downtown, to not be burdened and have more parking.
But they have a different set of rules, so don't worry about downtown.
Yeah.
Downtown's a totally different animal, but I understand what you're saying.
It's totally unfinished.
Huh?
It's totally unfinished.
That too.
Has been unfinished since the 80s.
That too.
Is the landscaping done at the Wall of Honor? I have a question about that.
Well, it's not a building. Therefore, it doesn't trigger landscaping requirements. It's a monument. Okay, so you have to look at it differently. The PD had to meet the landscaping requirements.
Okay.
So the, there was an existing parking lot that was already there that's utilized for the wall. The installation of the wall did not trigger compliance. PD built their own parking lot that meets, that complies with the code. So you're seeing a merging of an existing and a new, and you're seeing that disparity between them. And maybe that's something that I can get this commission. Um, I know the, the, the three newer com, uh, commissioners, Commissioner Rubio is probably more, because she was a business owner, is more experienced with the old landscape code. Um, when it was, you had to retain 30%. You put six trees and 12 shrubs per acre.
It was changing as I came on the commission.
Yeah, so, okay, so then Commissioner Bushnell too. So, so we have a lot of examples of what that looks like. And maybe it would be helpful to use, to see the before and the afters. And then, you know, like I said, to see if there's a value in it or if you, you want to recommend to the council that there's not enough value in it. Um, because I can tell you that until we revise this code, what we received was the minimum necessary, the absolute minimum necessary. The heights were smaller. I can get you photos of sites that were developed under that code and they still look like they were just planted yesterday because they were so tiny when they were put in the ground. Um, that's just what the code allowed and it was so minimal that you can literally drive by them and you don't even know where those six trees and 12 shrubs are because most businesses aren't sitting on an acre that's a small business. They're on a half acre or maybe they're on three-quarters of an acre. So when you see what that doesn't look like, there is a balance. I mean, are we at too much? Is the pendulum too far to the right? But I, I think it maybe would be helpful to you if I get you some information on what things look like under and what that code actually looked like so you can see where that, where that pendulum needs to sit now, so you can make a recommendation.
Well, I've, I've seen Wasilla since 1974 and I've watched it. I haven't paid attention to the codes and the landscaping and all that because, uh, most of the time I did not live in the city limits, but, uh, I've definitely seen a lot of stuff that could have been def, done differently.
For sure. That's what we're trying to work through.
Commissioner Sejel?
Yeah, um, I kind of agree with Commissioner Rubio. I think we gotta bring in some people that, you know, understand this a lot better than, well, I know me because I just found out about a year ago what kind of trees were in my yard and I've been living there 17 years, so. What I thought I had, I didn't, I don't have. So I, I do agree we need to do that. Um, I would be amenable to going ahead and finishing up the industrial portion that you were directed to by the mayor and then relooking the rest of it and revising that as necessary. Um, and the comment you made, Commissioner Seals, about Target and Freddie's, I do see, think the Target parking is cumbersome as far as traffic. And I think probably a better, um, option is the way Cars parking lot is laid out because they have a break in some of those islands where you can kind of actually drive across and they have speed bumps there, so you just can't, you know, fly through there. So I think that one's laid out a lot better than the Target one because it seems like those block, those islands go for a mile. And, um, so I think that was about it. Yeah, I just feel, you know, at some point we gotta bring in the people that actually understand this and can say, you know, well, if you make an island 160 square feet versus 100 square feet, what does that do to parking? You know, I mean, for, I mean, like a place like a Cars or Freddie's or Target, I mean, how many spaces would that eliminate? I mean, I don't know. And, um, so I think, yeah, we gotta, at some point we have to bring in the people to actually do this and understand it and be able to tell us what the benefit and the cost is. And, um, maybe another solution is seeing what other cities have done and seeing if, hey, you know, that looks good. Can we replicate that here in Wasilla?
Commissioner Rubio, I really do, I second it in the sense of bringing in an expertise, you know? Like anything, if I need a second opinion on a doctor, I go to a second doctor, right? If my kid needs a tutor, I don't try to tutor him myself. I get a tutor that's an extra. I feel like we have enough in the public to outreach that and that can work with the staff to come up with, you know, a fine-tuning plan and then bring it to the table for us after they've already worked, you know, whatever hours it is on that volunteering.
Okay, I'll keep talking. So we, we have some things here that, uh, so for our next meeting, can we break out? And, and can we, can we try to get, I know we got these comments at the last minute. Um, and so I wasn't even able to review all of them prior, prior to today's meeting. Um, and so I'm gonna have to go, keep going through some of them. But I would like to separate out, if we can, the industrial aspects of it, um, and the industrial zoning codes and kind of set them aside, separate them from these comments so we have two, two different working documents. But then also, as part of this revision, let's look for, um, let's, each of the commission members go through all the definitions that pertain to this. And that was the, that's in that, uh, Wasilla municipal code that, uh-
You have your package.
Yeah, but we need to go through all the definitions. Let's look at the definitions. Make sure that you understand what they are. Because, uh, if we don't, if we, the commissioners, do not understand what these definitions mean, then we need to revise them so that somebody looking at them understands them. Because that's what that aspect is, that's what it's all about. And if it leads to a discussion, then, um, like in one of them, it was talking about, uh, the mulch, and then there was an example. So it went to a little bit more detail as far as what that meant. So it went to a little bit more detail as far as what that meant. And that might help us with getting some better, uh, feedback from the public. And I don't say just the public, it's the, I mean, we have, we have good, we have landscape architects that are coming in. It would be nice to get some feedback from more of the, um, the landscapers, because the landscapers seem to be having, having the problem, not necessarily the architects. The architects are saying, hey, it's great. The landscapers are going, this doesn't work, and I want to know why. Is it because, well, I know, I know one answer. It was explained to me the other day, they were telling me about some situations, and landscapers bid projects based on what they think, and then when they find out that they need more dirt, they just spread it thinner to make ends meet. And so you won't necessarily get the whole product that you thought you were going to Welcome to business. Yes. So I think if we, if we clarify that, and we can finish with this portion of it, and then we can expand out into a bigger rewrite of the, of the landscaping, as maybe pertains to commercial developments, to retail developments, et cetera. Does that sound good to everybody?
I'm in agreement with that.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Rubio?
Yes.
Tina?
Oh, I'm fine. Whatever you mentioned. Yeah, I'm just writing notes.
Are you, are you, are you, are you good with, I mean, is that a reasonable?
No, yeah, it's absolutely reasonable.
Okay. Take this in steps, because I'm kind of an, I mean, I'm, I'm talking emotion, but I'm more of an, I'm more of an analytical person. I like to check my boxes, and I like to look, like, does this definition, if I read this, does it say what I mean? And, you know, in, in writing contracts, in my line of work, people love to use all this legalese stuff, but say what you mean, keep it simple. And I think that, if we can keep the, the definition aspect of it, so that it can be interpreted well, that might be a first good step.
And, and again, I would encourage each commissioner to, if you see something you like in the community, snap a photo. We all have smartphones. Snap a photo, email it to me. You see something you don't like, snap a photo, email it to me. You know, I like this, can we make it be more of this? Oh, I don't like that. I know that's just your, your preference at that point, but that still at least starts going, hey, I think that's a reasonable balance right there. That, I don't know what that costs. So then we can take those photos and say, what would it cost to do something like that? You know what I mean? We can do the analytical research if we have those, at least a few preferences of what we would, we think that, you know, again, read through that purpose and intent. You can look in the comprehensive plan. I can send you as much or as little information as you want, but that's gonna be helpful to me. I can certainly, will, I'll send this out to, you know, at least let people know that there's more changes coming.
Would you, would you send it to the Home Builders Association?
Yeah.
And while, and while we, and while we, because I, I heard that they just found out about this like two days ago, and, and the person called me, and I'm like, it's been on the agenda for two months. If you weren't paying attention, that's your fault. Because I've mentioned it at the Valley Board of Realtors meetings, I've mentioned it at other venues where it should have spread out, and people should notice it. I've said it at Rotary meetings, for people that are in the community, they're in construction and different things like that. Of course, people like to bitch. They like to complain about things. They, they, they like to be, say that's a problem, they don't want to necessarily be part of the solution. So I don't want to just paint this whole thing as a horrible thing, because it's got a lot of really good stuff. It's, the question is, is what, what is not good? And what, what is the tolerance of, I know the vision of what the people wanted many years ago. I know that vision's changed, because most, a lot of those people have moved on out of the Wasilla area. Some of them are still around. But even on a, a simple issue of cannabis being allowed within the city limits of, of Wasilla, when the legalized vote, I had a conversation with the then-current mayor, and he said the city, the residents of Wasilla voted against it. And so the city of Wasilla put out a, a moratorium against it. Well, when they voted again to legalize it within the borough, the city of Wasilla residents actually voted for it, as a borough-wide initiative. Which I was surprised, I didn't think we would be allowed to vote, because we had already opted out. So why do we get to vote? But the whole borough got to vote on, on whether or not legal, it would be legal in the valley, and the resident, the, the percentage in the city flipped by about the same percentage they had been against, they were now four.
That's a NIMBY thing.
But that's...
If someone wants access to marijuana, it doesn't mean I want it next to my house.
I know, but that's, right. But that's, what I'm saying, though, is perceptions change.
It does.
Perceptions change over time, and that was a course of about a year. Perceptions where people were against something at that point in time, it came out, everybody's against it, not in my backyard, they're like, oh, wow. It's not that bad. Okay, we'll allow it. Now, I'm not saying that necessarily it should be allowed inside of the city limits of Wasilla, because I have clients that do not want that to happen, because they operate outside the city limits of Wasilla. So, but it would have been a tax revenue, a very valuable tax revenue to this, to this city, if they had actually opted the other direction. But those are, I mean, in time, people's perceptions change. People move, new people move to the city. Things, things evolve.
You would know more of this. Isn't there a kind of generalized turnover time in a community?
That's hard to, that would be really hard to say in, I mean, in Alaska, you know, our population turned over so much because of the military turnover.
Yeah.
And we have a large population out here. But then you also have a lot of core residents that live inside the city limits of Wasilla that have owned property here forever, that are probably still those same core residents. So I would think that the, the turnover inside the city limits is probably less than outside the city limits. Just a, and that's purely a speculative...
On the lake, I'll agree with you.
Yes.
See, but why don't you get outside the lake?
It doesn't matter.
I, there's so many duplexes that have been built, and single-family homes, and just even in 10 years, they've changed hands two or three times.
Yeah.
I mean, I think there's a whole lot of turnover, especially in the newer, well, even the new, the old, it doesn't seem to matter. I see them all the time, fourplexes being sold, resold, you know?
Alaska, Alaska real estate is a, it's...
Strangely.
Well, what's really interesting about it is, we do more real estate up here, for the limited number of people that we have, than most big communities. We do a tremendous amount. The, the company not to be named, many years ago, when I got involved, was doing over a billion dollars a year in Alaska. And that put them as the fourth-largest real estate country, company in the country at the time. That, that was huge, and, and you don't think of it, because you look at, you know, we don't have that many people. But we have a huge amount of churn, but that churn's really slowed down in recent years. It sped up in the last year and a half because of low interest rates, a lot of move-up buyers. The median price of a home right now is up 12.5% so far this year. That's huge. But that's median price. That means you have a lot of move-up buyers, that are, that are transitioning out of the lower-income homes, up into higher, higher-valued homes. So a changing of wealth, lower interest rates, et cetera, that's what, that's what's doing. And we will feel this pain in a couple of years. But if people are smart, and stick to their homes six, seven, eight years, they'll be fine. But, and I think we've gotten rid of a lot of that three and four years done in Alaska and moved, that we don't have the relocation companies moving people in and out of here. Our populations are more stable, which is why the valley is continuing to grow. All right. Any other comments?
No, I've been waiting patiently to hear from this great young lady.
So, so if, if, I'm gonna break protocol, because I was told I could, and the attorney can stop me if I'm wrong, but we have had one, one viewer in our audience all evening. I believe there was comments submitted by this person into our packets, if I'm correct. But they are an expert in the field, and if there are no objections from the other commission members, and from the city attorney, I would like to open up to the one person in the audience that is listening to this, and see if they have any comments on what we've been talking about. City attorney or commission members, do you have any objections?
City attorney doesn't have any objection.
Commissioner Seals, no objection.
Commissioner Sejal, no objections.
I don't think she has any objections. Would you, do you have any comments? And could you please come forward, write your name on the, the sheet, and say it into the microphone for the record?
The good thing about doing it this way, you don't have a three-minute or five-minute time limit.
Oh, by the way, you have a minute.
It's at their taller.
A minute and a half.
Twenty-eight seconds.
As patient as she's been, I think we can give her some time here.
I could go on for a long time. My name is Marie Hulse. I am a landscape architect with Corvus Design. Our main office is in Anchorage, but I am located in Wasilla. So I just want to say that this conversation is wonderful. It has been basically a repeat of the conversation we've had in our office multiple times over the last three years that I've worked here. So just a little background on me. I came here, I'm from northern Nevada. I was a landscape architect down there for 15 years, and then I came up here. I'm a registered landscape architect in the state of Alaska. But I have a lot of experience with permitting and planning, civil design work, surveying. So I have a fairly broad background in site design, and which is one thing that kind of is a benefit to my addition to Corvus Design. And I appreciate code. I, I also lived in a community that was heavily coded. So developers didn't like it. It was very, very expensive for them to develop, but there were benefits for being located in that area. We were just adjacent to South Lake Tahoe. So we had very wealthy individuals moving into the community. And I think that there is a balance that needs to be made between the community, and the goals of the community, and the cost of improvements. If there is an imbalance, that seems to be where problems occur. I know we've had several clients that have pulled projects out of Wasilla, because they could not afford the landscape improvements. Our, in the past three years, repeatedly, every time we do a cost estimate, our costs tend to be about 25% of the total project budget, which is very high, and it has caused people to reduce the size of their buildings, or pull the plug on the project entirely. So, and I appreciate all the work that Tina has done in the last three years that I've worked with her. It's, it's been nice talking to her, and we've had some very long conversations about some of the things that we've come up with. And, and I appreciate the conversations I've had with local plant suppliers, and with local contractors. Sometimes that's an education process. We're not trying to be difficult. Sometimes we're just the middle man between communicating the code, getting projects approved, and what contractors are used to. Some contractors are used to doing what they want, some are used to codes from Anchorage, some are just, they just have different ideas. So some don't read the plans well. So there's always a, a balance there, and we try to work with the contractors to educate them, and, and provide a good plan that's going to meet the intent of the code. I, I know from experience, the people that we've worked with, their, their main thought was they want to have a nice landscape. Unfortunately, as everybody knows, something that is beautiful is subjective. So what some person might think is beautiful, other people don't appreciate. A couple of the main issues that we've come across time and time again is the bark mulch. Most of the people, especially the commercial developers, do not like the bark mulch, because it blows. I, as a landscape architect, appreciate the benefits of the bark mulch, but I think too much does tend to be a maintenance issue. It clogs storm drain, infrastructure, and it is something that typically does not get replenished. Therefore, when it blows away the first time, or the snowplows tear it away, it's gone. And that you have a bed that does not look well. So, so, you know, perhaps one of the, the compromises is we have bark mulch around the plant material, and rock mulch adjacent to that. Therefore, the plant gets the benefit from the bark mulch, preserving moisture, keeping the soil uncompacted, and it also biodegrades, which provides nutrients to the plant material. And if you have the rock mulch around the bark mulch, that will somewhat help corral the, the bark mulch a little bit, and when it does blow out of the planting hole, it's not a completely bare bed. But that's an aesthetic issue that the city, you know, they've got a, a vision, and, you know, it needs to be met. And that's one of our, our jobs, is to meet the goals of the communities that we're working in. It's not necessarily our opinions. Some, or some it is, but it's not necessarily just our opinions. It's, you know, we are, we are, we're licensed, and we are told to protect the public health, safety, and welfare. That's our job. So we have to be sensitive to costs, but that can't always be the driving factor. You know, another issue that we've come across with is the perennial quantities. I understand the intent, you know, they do look beautiful, a couple months that they're blooming, but they, when we do our cost estimates, they do tend to equal the same amount cost-wise for installation and, and material costs as the trees and shrubs combined. So it's nothing for us to have a $21,000 item for perennials, which tends to upset our clients. So, um, so, you know, and I think that there's some, there are some compromises that, you know, through some processes, we could possibly help understand the vision of the city, and we can maybe come up with a compromise where it's a little bit more cost-effective, and it still comes across, and it still creates the vision for the city. Because we do understand the benefits of, of a beautiful city. You know, I, I tell people all the time, it's like a cake. If you have no frosting on the cake, you can have the most moist cake on the planet, but nobody's gonna buy it. If you have the worst cake on the planet, but beautiful frosting, people are gonna buy it.
At least once.
So, you know, and we get a lot of visitors through the area. We have a lot of people coming in from out of town for, to maybe look at putting a business here, or to relocate, and the appearance of our town is their first impression. And if it's not a good first impression, they'll keep going, or they will get a negative opinion. And I've been here for three years, and I love this community. It's a great community. The people are wonderful, and if they don't stop, then other people won't find that out. So, you know, there, there is a, there is a lot of benefits to having a beautiful community. And I think that with some, some massaging of the code, I think we can come up with something that the community and the businesses will appreciate. Most people want a beautiful site, even the industrial parts. They want it to look nice. They just, they need it to balance out on their budget, or else they can't do their projects. So another thing is some of the plant sizes, and this is something that I've worked with, with the plant suppliers, especially local ones. They have a really hard time getting plants up, up to Alaska in the sizes that are required. There are logistic issues, such as most of these plants have to be shipped up, and so they can get damaged on the way up, and they are very difficult to install. Typically, from my experience, standard evergreen trees are six feet tall, and that's in communities California, Nevada, Anchorage, it's, it's kind of a standard size. And I, one of the reasons is, is, there are several, but with a six-foot-tall tree, a person can install it. With a 10-foot-tall tree, you have to have machinery to install it. And so that creates a logistic issue, and because it's such a big tree, and because most of those trees have to be grown in the lower 48 and brought up versus having been in, in the community for a while, and having adapted to our local climate, they're more likely to stress and die. So now, in two years, you have shrubs and perennials that have adapted to their soil, and you have to disturb all that, because you have to tear the tree out, because the tree died, and you have to use machinery, which makes it a little bit more difficult. So if we can get some smaller plant material in, it does need to be healthy, and it does need to be of a specific size, so that it is somewhat effective. We don't want to put a pencil tree in a landscape planter, it likely won't survive. It'll probably get driven over, most likely, or plowed over. But I think that there can be a balance, and in my experience, especially in northern Nevada, we have a very harsh climate there. And I have seen trees, identical tree species planted close together, and the smaller trees tend to grow faster and stronger, withstand the wind, any harsh elements, much better than a larger tree, because most of these plant materials are grown in Oregon. than a larger tree because most of these plant materials are grown in Oregon. It's an ideal climate for plants. So you bring this tree that is 10 years old, 10 feet tall, up to Alaska, stresses, it dies, or it, it restricts its growth abilities because it's kind of having some problems. When a six-foot tree is less adapted to these ideal climates, and it flourishes much more and it grows faster. So in a couple of years, you have the same-sized tree, whether it was planted as a six-foot or as a 10-foot, and the tree that was planted as a six-foot is gonna be healthier. So this conversation could last a long time. But these are just a few things that I think, I really do appreciate the idea of being able to look at the code a little bit and maybe discussing it with some of the local nurserymen and some of the landscape architects in the area. You know, we can definitely go into a lot more discussion on the questions that you've had. For, for instance, the larger soil areas for trees. The reason why you want larger soil areas for your trees is that's gonna protect the health of your tree. If you have a small area for your tree and it's parked in a parking lot, it's not likely gonna live past 10 years. If you have the larger, larger space, that tree's gonna live for 20, 30, 40 years. So you're protecting your investment because what you're doing is you're creating a home for that tree. So if you take a bird and you put it in a piece of PVC pipe, it's not gonna be very happy and it's likely gonna die, which is the same thing you're doing to a tree when you put it in a small planter. It needs that soil. It needs the moisture from the soil getting into the roots. Yes.
I, I just want to stop you for a second because I had a question based on that thought. Do we differentiate size of trees to planting islands versus perimeters?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay, okay.
So, you know, when you have a little bit larger soil area and soil volume for your tree, you're protecting your investment. You're allowing that tree to survive for longer than 10 years, and it's gonna look healthier. It's gonna be happier. You're gonna have better canopies. You're gonna have healthier leaves, and you're gonna have less disease on your trees. Like I said, I could go on for a very long time on this discussion, but I hope this is helpful.
I guess, we'll have more discussions because we'll have hearings and we may open up our, if we can get people here, I don't mind opening up a committee of the whole because we had some really good discussions when we had our, our VBRO here. It was heated at times, but it did well. We, I mean, we got to hear what needed to be said, and then we figured out the issues and then we tried to address the issues that we could, shall I say. So that's, at this point in time, but I am curious, the key issues that you run into for, why people wouldn't pursue a project is, as you said, was the expense. And I see that, that's, that's, people are like, oh, I want to do this, and they're like, oh, I'll just go over here and do it. And I, I've had people say, oh, I'm gonna open a clinic, and I'm not gonna buy that one. It's half a million dollars. That's, that's overpriced. I can go build one for that. Uh, no, you can't. It would be a million and a half, I'm sorry. So it's, people don't realize, always realize what they're, what they think they can do. But as far as the cost-wise, you said the perennials were probably one of the more expensive. Are there, are there other issues that you find objections that people have that maybe we should look at or could look at? We may not be able to do anything with it, but are there, are certain things that come up consistently?
You know, it, it's really just the mulches and the perennials that are pretty much on it, on every project that people have a hard time with. And I think a lot of it has to do with the costs.
Okay. Soil depths, things like that. I mean, that's, we see, I know we have things that we specify, but kind of sort of, or what you should, you guys should specify probably as far as what it should be. But then also we, we go out and we find out that, no, there's not enough dirt. That was one of the conversations I had with a landscaper. He's like, you know, I can't make a landscaping bed have consistent levels of dirt. And I looked at him, I said, I know that, but you have to have enough dirt for it to grow, right? He goes, well, yeah, but I might have two inches here and three inches there. I'm like, that's probably okay, but you shouldn't have half an inch here and three inches over here.
Yeah.
So unless you're using rock. And then you can get rid of a lot of that topsoil and have the rock in the landscape and then have your dirt and your mulch, like you, you suggested with the circles.
Right. Yeah. And, you know, and then that's a top dressing item, you know, that's what goes on top of the soil. The soil is what provides the water retention and the nutrient retention for your plants, which creates healthier plants. They live longer, they're less likely to stress and die, and they're more likely to withstand any infrequent drought conditions that we get here. Another thing that we are dealing with right now is irrigation. Irrigation, even just a temporary irrigation requirement may be beneficial. We've seen quite a few plant material die just because the, the maintenance people don't understand the importance of, of supplemental water, especially when plants are fairly new, and, and they stress and die for that reason as well. So people don't think you need irrigation because we are always green. But in reality, these plants, especially in their first few years, need a lot of water to get established, so. And as somebody who's worked in the desert, the key is to get very deep roots, and you do that through watering. So that's just something I thought I would throw out there. But, you know, it's, there's been a lot of maintenance issues too. I know a lot of our projects have gone in beautifully, and then they're not maintained properly, and they don't survive. And so it's, it's just a lack of education sometimes. I mean, the plants are very complicated and it's not, being a landscape maintenance person doesn't mean you can run a lawnmower. It means understanding a living, breathing organism.
Yeah, we, we recently, on the advice of a landscaper, switched a planting bed that had been just a flower, annual flower bed, and it was right next to a handicap spot. So you hop, you come out of your parking spot right into the flowers. And they were talking about it, and I found out that the landscaper that had been, the people that had been planting this flower bed had retired during COVID. They weren't gonna do it. So I called up Matt's Landscaping and said, hey, I need to do something here. What can you do? And he goes, you're a little late in the season. I don't know if I can get anything for you. So what we went to is, we already had some rock beds around some of the trees. We went to a rock, a gravel bed there and then put in oak barrels and, and flowers. And he goes, you'll cut down on your, you won't have to water as frequently. They will stay healthier and it will survive. And then it also created a, well, we'll have to watch it. Hopefully, it'll create a safer environment, actually for the handicap spots that are right there.
Yeah.
And the, unless the gravel ends up in the spot. I, I gotta, we're gonna watch that and see what happens.
Any vertical element you can add to landscaping in this climate is a definite plus because if the snowplows can't see it, it tends to get taken out. So that's one of the benefits of having the trees in the parking lots and in these planting beds is if you've got these vegetated areas which control traffic, it actually directs traffic direction, directs parking direction, it provides groundwater recharge in a minimal amount, but it does help a little bit. And, you know, when you, when I go into Walmart, I know all of the spaces that are under the trees are full of people, usually with dogs in their cars. So trees are very important to parking lot areas, and, and it's, it's a big topic and we can talk a long time about it. But another thing those trees do provide is a vertical visual cue that there is something here, please don't plow over the entire area without slowing down. So my husband was a snowplow driver in Nevada, and he's destroyed a few concrete curbs, but when he sees the tree there, he tends to slow down.
Gotta rebuild a couple this year.
That's just the hazard of the, the job. You're going to do that.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions for our guest?
Commissioner Sajil, I don't.
Commissioner Seals, I just want to thank you for the information on the cost and that some projects have been lost due to the cost. So thanks, that's important information. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Rubio?
Other than thank you, because that was awesome, and I think we need more of, of your type of people and, and bring more to the public on this.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. If anybody have any further comments on this, that, anything that is near and dear to their heart that they want encapsulated on the record? If that, or would somebody prefer to make a motion to exit committee of the whole?
Commissioner Seals, I make a motion that we exit committee of the whole.
Commissioner Sajil's second.
Any objections? Hearing none, we exit committee of the whole at 7:39 PM. You got lots of notes, I saw, over there. Tina? Okay, cool. All right. There's no unfinished business. We'll move on to communications. Did anybody have any questions about the communications in the packet? Nope, okay. Are there any other audience participation comments? Seeing none? Okay, no. And now we'll have staff member comments.
I just wanted to thank Marie for coming out. She and I have spent a lot of time, and I know she and Peter spent enormous amount of time compiling that document. I mean, it's just a few pages, but that doesn't get produced in five minutes. I mean, that takes thought and, and all that. And I know they, they also devoted time. I think we probably spent an hour and a half, two hours on the phone over a Zoom meeting, going over that, discussing issues and, and trying to find ways to propose some of these changes and bring them forward. So that's been invaluable to me as a planner, trying to bring this forward to you. So that's where, like I said, a lot of the changes that are, they're guided were, although there was some reach out to others, they were the active participants. And so they've been involved with a lot of projects in the city. They do a lot of the plans, so they should have a good understanding of what needs and desires are. So it's been, it's been invaluable, and I look forward to continuing to work with them. And just quickly to say, yeah, I mean, absolutely. It sounds, you know, I know when we did the perennials, there was that, it was more of a knee-jerk type of thing. You had nothing. People were doing nothing and the minimum of nothing that they could, and it was looking terrible. We want something really nice. So that's, you know, part of what this conversation is. How do you decide what? Sure, everybody has an opinion, and then when I say nice, don't take me as the word of meaning what you think nice is, what's reasonable, but what accomplishes the purposes of landscaping. And that's one of the things that Corvus Design has been really helpful. They've been pushing. The code just doesn't give me the flexibility, but I don't disagree with the things that they've said. There are flowering grasses, there are decorative grasses, there are all kinds of things that can take up space in these planting beds besides mulch. And you could use a combination of mulch and rocks and grass and other things. I mean, if you look through those photos, you'll see some of those older sites have done that very thing, and they're perfectly fine. I mean, there's nothing wrong with them. But what we'd had for so many years prior to amending this code was that even at six trees and 12 shrubs only for the entire site, people were still going, that's too much. We don't want to do it. And it's like, all right, enough's enough. You've got to, you know, we're giving up the, you used to have to preserve 30% of your vegetation that existed in it. And if it was taken away, you put it back. You couldn't clearcut the site, you couldn't level it or whatever. So don't forget the trade-off for these higher standards along the street, because really, that's really all you're looking at, and some landscape islands, because small sites don't have many landscape islands, is they now get 15% back of their lot for building development, for parking spaces for that that they did not have. Plus, the cost savings of being able to clearcut the entire lot and grade it at one time and then plant back afterwards was a huge thing that was a push from that development community of it's too hard to work around these stands of trees. It's not, you know, we have so much topography, and they want to move the gravel from this part of the site to this part of the site because they had onsite gravel, but they couldn't do it because that was part of the 30%. So there was a lot of thought and process put, and it was a trade-off. I mean, there are some costs that increase and some costs that decrease, and that land value of 15% of your lot back is a lot of value back to an owner. But the perennial, I think, is the biggest thing that did, I, I truly didn't have an understanding of the cost that was involved and the limited amounts at the time that that got adopted. Because I think there are cheaper alternatives that can make it just as attractive. We've talked about varieties of plants and that kind of stuff. There are other ways to do it, but unfortunately, you've got to figure out what that formula is because one of the comments from the boutique company, and I don't disagree with her, and Corvus has said the same thing. Can we not do the calculation of what the entire run of that road frontage those plantings would be and then choose how we want to disperse them? And yes, I think artistic design should be given to the, to the landscape architect, but how do you prevent the one who's doing the minimum necessary and wants to group it all at one end, and then you have 100 feet of nothing? So you've got to have, craft some language to say you must have a minimum amount at least every so many feet or something. There's, there's a way to do it, and that's what I'm gonna research as part of that next phase of, and I think these landscape architect companies will be helpful with that, is how do you do that to make sure it doesn't all just get shoved to one end and then you have nothing? But yet you can allow them to do varieties and mixes and combinations of gravel and mulch and, you know, things like that.
But you could. Though, these are your comments, I won't, I won't debate that. I won't debate that one with you. But you, but you could make it look, you could push everything to one area and make it look nice if that, depending on what you're trying to accomplish for sightlines and things like that. There's always a, that's where the, I think a variance or, yeah.
Yeah, and your road front. So, yeah. So, I mean, it's balancing that out, and unfortunately, we all know rules unfortunately get in place because somebody doesn't do the right thing. You know, the majority of the people do the right thing, but you have to write the rules for the people who won't do the right thing.
Or most of them are inked in blood.
Yeah, and you don't want it to be too extreme. And so that was the, the point of this, was trying to get that speculum back. And I think the size of the trees and the perennials are the, as Marie stated, have been that, and the mulch have been that biggest cry from the, the people who are building this, you know, that are wanting to develop a site and have a business, plus the landscape architect having to go to them and tell them what those costs are. You mitigate some of those. I haven't heard a lot of pushback on street trees or landscape islands or that kind of stuff. It's the perennials, the mulch.
Okay.
And some on the size of the trees.
Okay.
Anyway, well, I've got notes from the commission, and I have notes that Maurice shared too tonight, so I will move forward with separating it into dealing with the industrial and a standalone, and then we will game plan as to how we want to move forward with the remainder of the landscape chapters.
Okay.
Sounds good.
City Attorney, do you have any comments? Mr. Schwartz?
Sorry, no, it took me a second to get to my phone. Nope, it's, no comments for me.
All right. Commission members, do any of you have any comments?
No comments from me. Commissioner Sajil.
No comments at this time. Commissioner Seals.
Commissioner Rubio, no comment.
I only have one comment. Thank you for teaching every one of you, for your participation in this and your opinions. Opinions do matter. At this point in time, because everybody has to be heard, so thank you very much. And I will say we are dismissed at 7:46 PM. 7:47.
I'll send you some pictures, Tina, but I bought a house last year, and it has some wild gra-.